Welcome back. Thank you for that short recess. So we'll go ahead and get started again. Buenos, san hafa de guahu si senador Telo Taiwi. And we are here this morning to hear bills 149, 137, and 138. And the time now is 9:04 a.m., Thursday, July 10, 2025. This hearing is conducted by myself, Senator Telo Taiwi, Chairperson on the Committee on Economic Investment, Military Build-Up, Regional Relations, Technology, Regulatory Affairs, Justice, Election, and Retirement. And to comply with the open government law, notices of this hearing is disseminated to all senators via email and published in KUAM on Wednesday, July 2, 2025, and a second notice on Tuesday, July 8, 2025. Notice of this hearing is also available on the Guam Legislature's website and the Government of Guam Notice Portal. I would like to recognize those who are present today and also welcome those who are watching from home. Welcome to your Guam Legislature. At this time, I'd like to also recognize my colleagues who are here today, our Vice Speaker, Senator Tony Ada. Thank you for being here, and of course, Senator Sean Gumitata, who's also here. Thank you so much, sir. And thank you for always being here, Senator Gumitata, for all these hearings. And he reminds me of me and Joanne. You know, when we used to be every public hearing. We have, we have a partner now who's here. So thank you so much, Senator. Colleagues, the copy of this legislation and documents received ahead of time, you can find on the Google Drive, a link that was emailed to you in advance. For those who are listening in the public, you can also find the legislation on the Guam Legislature's website. And that's GuamLegislature.gov. But if you need assistance, please feel free to call the Legislature at 671-472-3465 if you need assistance to locate this legislation. Before I begin, I would like to set some rules of engagement during the public hearing. Excuse me. First, when you speak, please speak directly into the microphone. And for the record, please state your name, position, and who you represent. I ask that all those who are testifying today to stay seated for any questions my colleagues may have for you, and then you'll be excused. I respectfully ask that you conduct ourselves professionally and respect each other's opinions. Those individuals who do not comply to these rules will be removed from the room and prohibited from further participation. The following bills on the agenda for discussion this morning will be Bill 137-38, and Bill 138-38, and of course, 149-38. And at this time, we will go with Bill 138-38, introduced by Vice Speaker Senator Tony Ada, which is an act to amend 7.58 of Article 2, Chapter 7, Title IX Guam Code annotated, relative to holding persons criminally responsible for crimes committed after knowingly, willingly, and intentionally consuming alcohol and other substance by repealing the limitations of the intoxication defense. And at this time, I would like to recognize the author of the legislation. Vice Speaker Ada, you are now recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for rearranging the agendas. We'll have Bill 138-38-COR be heard first. Good morning, everyone, and thank you for being here. What this bill does, Madam Chair, is that it, the bill eliminates the voluntary intoxication defense for criminal acts. This bill is a simplified version of Bill Number 233-36, which I introduced in my last legislative term. Unfortunately, it was not heard at that time. This bill makes a bold statement. You get yourself drunk or high, you're fully responsible for the crime that you commit in your intoxicated state. It seems that not a day goes by where a person gets arrested and blames alcohol or meth for their crimes. Enough is enough. If you drink or do drugs, take responsibility for your actions. If you're not addicted, if you're addicted, get help, get treatment, get better. We have services available to help you. No one should be excused from bad conduct because they were consumed, they consumed too much beer, smoked meth, or took fentanyl. The current law limits culpability to recklessness. If you were, if you were to rank recklessness in order of criminal responsibility, recklessness ranks above negligence but below extreme or depraved indifference to the value of human life, and premeditation and malice aforethought. I note that no state has eliminated the involuntary intoxication defense. Involuntary intoxication, where a person becomes intoxicated without their knowledge or against their will, is still generally a valid defense in all states according to the American Academy of Psychiatry and the Law. This bill does not eliminate the involuntary intoxication defense. What this bill does is that you do, you drink, you smoke, you be held accountable. For that, Madam Chair, I look forward to any testimony that be provided. And I'm sure that the Attorney General's Office, perhaps, sent in some testimony or other groups that testified on this legislation.
Thank you, Vice Speaker. And yes, they will be submitting. They did mention they would be here, but something must have happened. So we'll make sure we get a testimony from them. Also, the bill was sent to BBMR. And this bill, the BBMR sent it there responding on May 19, 2025. This bill basically is administrative in nature. It has no impact. Also, legal counsel, our legal counsel, looked at this legislation as well. And legal counsel has no recommendations or changes or amendments at this time. And at this time, I'd like to recognize Sean Gumitata, Senator Sean Gumitata.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you all for being with us today. I just wanted to bring up one thing for the committee, Madam Chair, to kind of expound on the comments of the bill's author. An affirmative defense, excuse me, an affirmative defense is a defense in which the defendant introduces evidence which it found to be credible will negate criminal liability or civil liability even if it is proven that a defendant committed the alleged acts. The party raising the affirmative defense has the burden of proof on establishing that it applies. Raising an affirmative defense does not prevent a party from also raising other defenses. In the bill's findings and intent, the section, it states that arrestees often make statements or excited utterances declaring to be drunk, high, stoned, or addicted to avoid responsibility for criminal acts. And I think what we're all trying to get at is people need to be held responsible. And just a couple of questions, Madam Chair. I'm hoping that the committee can answer in advance of the markup. And if we can, and I just wanted to ask the committee, what have been the resource requirements of our criminal justice system in supporting services which are necessary to determine under current law whether a person's intoxication is self-induced and qualifies to assert an affirmative defense? And one more thing, Madam Chair, for the record, as drafted, how would the bill impact a case where intoxication or a person's impairment was due to a consumption of a cannabis product? And to what extent is data available over the last two years regarding crimes, including but not limited to motor vehicle accidents, burglary, and criminal sexual conduct, which were directly connected to cannabis use? Madam Chair, I just wanted to bring those two points to the committee's attention. And again, thank you for the opportunity for me to be here today.
Thank you, Senator Gumitata. And the committee will look into that. We will reach out to the Guam Highway Department, DPW, to see how they address any situations like that. And of course, you know, the material used or the equipment used to determine what type of intoxication, if they have that, so they can enforce the law correctly and be able to take it to the judiciary and provide the information needed. So I'll be sure to do that. And before I turn it over to the author, I would like to read something from the judiciary of Guam that they provided. Dear Madam Chair and members of the committee, thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony on the following bill, Bill 138-38-COR. As introduced, the measures address policy matters that fall within the purview of the legislative branch. While the judiciary will continue to review the bills, we do not anticipate a significant impact on our operations, and we will defer to the outcome of the legislative process. We do respectfully note that the ongoing work of the Guam Criminal Law Review Commission, which was established to conduct a comprehensive review of Guam's Criminal and Correctional Code and Criminal Procedure Code. As of June 13, 2025, the Commission has completed its review of 24 of the 46 chapters in Title IX. See attached in term report. This includes Chapter 25, for which the Commission recommended no changes to 25.15 through 25.45. 14 chapters are currently under review by the Subcommittee, and eight chapters remain pending. The Commission transmits quarterly updates to the Legislature and makes its report publicly available. In light of the Legislature's continued support for the Commission, we respectfully encourage the body to consider the Commission's ongoing work when developing related legislation to prevent duplication and ensure a coordinated approach to reforming Guam's criminal code. And this is from the Administrative Courts, Danielle Rosetti. There's also on the Google Drive, colleagues, it's about, if I'm not mistaken, about 100, no, over 500 pages? 160 pages. They can look, I thought it was 500. That's a lot, but it was too much to print out. But you can find that on the Google Drive to give you more insight on this legislation. And at this time, I'd like to recognize the author of the legislation, Vice Speaker Tony Ada. You're recognized. And also, before I get started, also like to recognize Senator Trece Terlaihi, who's here with us. Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you again for those statements from the courts. And I look forward to Bill 138-38-COR for its markup meeting and getting this measure moved forward. Again, thank you, Madam Chair, for your moving this public hearing forward on Bill 138-38-COR.
You're very welcome, Vice Speaker. And if there's no further questions or comments, this concludes our discussion on Bill 138-38-COR. The next bill up for our agenda is Bill 137-38-COR, which is recognized again by our Vice Speaker, Senator Tony Ada, who's also a veteran, by the way. It's an act to add a new 25.50 to Chapter 25 and a new 19.80 to Chapter 19, both of Title IX Guam Code annotated relative to the definition and inclusion of interfering with the reporting of criminal sexual conduct offenses. Vice Speaker, you are now recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair, again, for hearing Bill Number 137-38-COR. What this bill does, it makes interfering with reporting a criminal sexual conduct a specific criminal offense. This bill is constructed identically to the law that makes interfering with reporting a family violence a criminal offense. This law enacted by Public Law 33-202 enacts two distinct laws, one in the family violence law and the other in the assault law. Similarly, the bill also enacts two distinct laws, one in the criminal sexual conduct law and the other in the assault law. RAINN, R-A-I-N-N, which is the acronym for Rape, Abuse, and Incest National Network, the nation's largest anti-sexual violence organization, reports that 63% of all sexual assaults go unreported. The Guam Coalition Against Sexual Assault and Family Violence in 2020 reported an identical rate for Guam, but suggested, in a KUAM news story, that the rate might be as high as 80%. We can't have justice for victims of sex crimes unless these crimes are reported. Many victims are reluctant to report these crimes because of the shame or stigma that's associated with them. Many more, however, moreover, are coerced by their attackers or relative of their attackers to keep quiet. This has to end. Like family violence and child abuse, anyone who interferes with reporting of sexual assault commits a serious crime and should be brought to justice. This bill will make that offense a felony. Again, Madam Chair, this bill is identically structured to the interference with the reporting of the family violence law. And as you know, again, once again, the most under-reported crimes in the U.S. are sexual assault and certain types of theft. I look forward to hearing the testimonies again from the Attorney General's Office and those that are concerned with Bill Number 137-38. And I look forward to moving this forward again. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're very welcome, Vice Speaker. At this time, I'd like to recognize Senator Sean Gumitata.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say for the record, based on GPD's 2023 Uniform Crime Report, 268 criminal sexual conduct cases were reported in Guam, including CSC first degree, 60; CSC second degree, 63; CSC third degree, 18; criminal sexual conduct fourth degree, 44; and assault with the intent to commit criminal sexual conduct at 83. Now, Madam Chair, I have only one question for the committee. With these numbers, with Guam having fewer than 90 licensed foster families as of January 2025 to help care for more than 800 children requiring temporary or long-term placement services, to what extent is our foster care system impacted by CSC crimes specifically involving minors? The law or the bill proposal does go a long way to assist in this matter. Just that one question, Madam Chair, otherwise, thank you again for the time to comment on the matter.
You're very welcome, Senator Gumitata. Again, we will reach out to those agencies that it does impact for their questions. I also like to recognize who joined us earlier is Senator Chris Barnett. He's here, thank you, sir, for being here. And of course, Senator Sabrina Solis-Mantonani. Thank you, colleagues, for coming. I'd like to now recognize Senator Terlaihi. If you have any questions for this bill? No questions? Senator Barnett, do you have any questions? No questions? Senator Mantonani, then? Okay. At this time, just a couple comments that, of course, this legislation was also given a testimony by the judiciary, which is the exact same testimony that I read earlier on. And again, on the Google Drive for my colleagues, you will find the Commission, the CLRC, which is 150 pages of information on the work that the CLRC has done to address some of the concerns in the Guam Code annotated that really needed review and clarification in the law. And that's been going on for the last three years, just for the listening public. And this Commission is halfway through of going through a certain title, chapter of the Guam Code annotated, just to correct that. Other than that, I'd like to have the author. Would you like to close, Vice Speaker?
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity again to have Bill Number 137-38-COR to be publicly heard. Again, we need to hold those accountable who tries to prevent anyone from reporting a criminal sexual conduct to the fullest extent of the law. I look forward to the markup meeting on Bill 137-38-COR, and I look forward to working with the committee. Thank you again, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Senator. And if there's no other further questions or comments, this concludes the discussion on Bill 130... Oh, gosh, what number was that? 130, thank you, Senator, 137-38. Now we'll move on to our next bill. Our next bill is Bill 149-38-LS, introduced by Senator Trece Terlaihi, which is an act to add 7160E and 7161F, Chapter 7, Title 16, Guam Code annotated relative to waiving veterans license plate fees. And at this time, I'd like to recognize the author of the legislation, Senator Trece Terlaihi.
Sisus Massey, Madam Chair. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for having this hearing. I very much appreciate it, especially with July 4 just passing. I think it's timely. And I really want to say thank you and welcome to all the veterans who are here this morning. Thank you for being here. And more importantly, thank you for your service. This bill is pretty much, we are recognizing that it is the 50th anniversary since the end of the Vietnam War in 1975, following U.S. withdrawal in 1973. 2025 also marks the 72nd anniversary of the end of the Korean War in 1953, following U.S. withdrawal in 1949. 2025 also marks the 80th anniversary since the end of World War II. Veterans from these wars continue to serve our community on their return. And as most of these highly respected veterans now exceed 70 years in age, it is the intent of Ilhezalatura to immediately honor them, their service and their commitment to our island through a waiver in license plate fees. This benefit is intended to coincide with the law already in place that recognizes 100% disabled or individually unemployable due to military service-connected injuries veterans, where previous legislation has waived fees for that class of veterans. And for those who have received military awards, such as the Medal of Honor, the Distinguished Service Cross, the Navy Cross, the Coast Guard Cross, the Distinguished Flying Cross, the Silver Star, Bronze Star, or the Purple Heart Medal, and those, of course, the Gold Star families. So this would, the bill would waive license fees for them and for this new class that we are adding by this bill. The only requirement is, of course, they have to be eligible, but we are asking them also to register at the Guam Office of Veterans Affairs. And that way, we just want to close that loop and make sure that we are, in fact, registering and have a list, and we can swear to Congress that these are the veterans we have living on Guam, and we can complete that duty as well. So I thank you again, and I hope I can get the support of all of our entire community and for this pretty token honor for our veterans. But I'm hoping that it, for them in their everyday-to-day life, that this is something significant. This is something that they can remember that we are trying to honor them, we are trying to thank them, and that we do this right now. Sisus Massey, Madam Chair.
You're very welcome, Senator Terlaihi. At this time, the bill, I'd like to report to the public that Bill 149-38 received a fiscal note from BBMR. And it states, "It should be noted that although the above information indicates an average loss of revenues of approximately $60,000 from the waiving of license fees for veterans under the current law, this amount may increase with the inclusion of the veterans of World War II, the Korean War, and the Vietnam Veterans War as proposed in the bill." Additionally, the vehicle registration fee revenues from the previous fiscal years stated above does not include how much of the amounts represent revenues specifically from the veterans under the existing law. The bill was also sent to our legal advisor, and under legal, they say that there are no recommended changes or amendments at this time. And at this time, I would just like to recognize those in the audience. If you could please stand when I say your name, and let's make sure the video is out in the public on this. I just want to recognize those who are here. I know you're in support, but we only have one person standing up to testify. And I'd like to bring him to the table first, is the Director of the Veterans Affairs, Joe Sinagazin. Buenos, Mr. Director, if you can come to the table. And if you're not going to be here to testify, then, you know, just stand and be recognized. But if I mention your name and you would like to come forward and testify, I greatly appreciate it. I'm sure we all would like to hear from our veterans and how they feel about this legislation. So at this time, I'd like to recognize Rocky Camacho. You want to stand, Rocky? Say hello to the audience that you're here? And he's in support of the legislation? Okay. And then we have Charlie Canata. Charlie, welcome. Okay, sir. Joe Mafnes. Buenos, Joe? Are you going to be, just, if I can forward, please, if you are? Thank you so much. We have Joseph Yatar. Buenos, my dancing partner there. And see, my favorite, see Nick Francisco. Will you be testifying? Please come forward, sir, if you are. You know, the reason why I'm making you do this is because nobody, you know, clicked off the box whether they're going to speak or not. So at least have you recognized being here today, taking the time out of your schedule. So Raymond Baza, I'm sorry, Raymond Baza? Buenos, Raymond? Lee Baza? Hafadi. Thank you. Francisco Candasu? That's a relative over there. Buenos, good morning. Henry McGlonia? Buenos, Henry? Thank you for being here, sir. Thank you. Of course, our director's here. Dan Cogar? Hi, Dan, good to see you again, sir. Kiana Adrillian? Oh, yeah, you're with the, yes. Hey, welcome, yeah. With the PDN, correct? It's good to see you again, as always. Thank you for being here for this important legislation for our veterans and recognizing them. And I think our Senator Terlaihi stated very clearly, what a perfect timing during this month of recognizing, you know, our veterans as well as our country, the birth of our country. So I appreciate it. And at this time, I'd like to, Director, would you like to go first, or would you like?
Can I have Mr. Francisco and Mr. Mafnes go first?
Absolutely.
I'll be honored, thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, since I called you first, Mr.?
Thank you.
Mr. Mafnes, you are recognized, sir.
Good morning, Senator Terlaihi, Senator Chris Barnett, Senator Telo Taiwi, Senator Sean Gumitata, and Vice Speaker Tony Ada, and Senator Mantonani. My name is Joseph Mafnes, retired Commandant Army Major of the United States Army with 36 years of service. I'm here today to express my full support for Bill 149-38. Thank you, Senator Terlaihi, and all the senators of the 38 Guam Legislature for introducing and supporting this important bill. We often hear the word "thank you for your service", but what do those words really mean? After 36 years of service, serving our country, I still struggle to find a clear answer. As a veteran, we put ourselves in arms' way to protect the freedom we all enjoy. And yet, after our service ends, the recognition we receive often stops at those five words. We deserve more than that. This bill gives us hope. It is a light at the end of the tunnel. Though it might seem like a small piece of legislation to some, to us veterans, it means a great deal. It is a step forward in acknowledging the sacrifice we have made. I also want to note that when I met fellow veterans, they often mentioned that Guam's leaders are listening to us, whether it's about VA license plate, Veterans Indicator on driver's license, health care access or disability claim support. It is clear progress is being made. And that's thanks to all of you, our lawmakers, as well as the dedicated veterans organization that advocate for our needs here on Guam and in our neighboring island like the CNMI, FSM, and Palau. I also want to recognize and thank the Governor and Lieutenant Governor for their effort in lobbying on behalf of the veterans and Congressman Moilen for raising Guam veterans' concern in the hills of Congress. As we mark major war anniversary, 72 years since the Korean War, 80 years since World War II, and 50 years since the Vietnam War, we must ask, how many of those who served are still with us today? Not many. And yet, those who return often continue to serve our communities in other ways. That is why legislation like Bill 149-38 is meaningful. It honors not only our past service, but our continuing commitment to this island and its people. In closing, I sincerely thank you, Senator Terlahi, and all the members of the 38 Guam Legislature for giving veterans like me the opportunity to be heard. Please continue to advocate for us. We deserve meaningful recognition, not just a "thank you for your service," but action that truly reflects the sacrifice we made. And let us not forget the family who supported veterans while we're deployed or away. Their sacrifices often gone unseen, but they are just as important. Thank you again for allowing me to testify today in strong support of Bill 149-38. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome, Mr. Mafnes. And, you know, I support this legislation. But I also, at the same time, want to thank you so much for your service and, you know, for the fighting of our right to be free. Thank you so much. And next, Mr. Francisco. You are now recognized, sir.
Thank you, Senator Telo, Senator Burnett, Senator Terlahi, Senator Gumatauto, Senator Ada, and Senator Mantenani. Good morning. You know, I am here to testify in support of this Bill 149-38. But, you know, I remember way, way back when I first testified in support of the Purple Heart Medal. And when we started this, they include all the other awards, like the Bronze Star, Silver Star, Distinguished Cross, and the Purple Heart, you know. But today I'm here because, you know, I am excited to see that this is finally coming to the floor. I thank Senator San Agustin for amending that when the first special license plate was enacted to amend that to include the Vietnam War. And what he did, he include all the other wars. And I thank Senator San Agustin for this. But I also would like to thank Therese, Senator Terlahi, for amending San Agustin's bill to waive the fee for the Vietnam and the other war license plate. You know that I am the President of the Vietnam Veterans and I am the Commander for the Military Order of the Purple Heart. We discussed this for so long with the Vietnam Veterans during our regular meeting and board meeting. And we thank, like I said, Senator San Agustin for including the Vietnam War. I myself, I am so happy to be here because I represent the Vietnam Veterans and I share what they went through during the Vietnam War. I myself, as a wounded combat veteran, I... And I have a lot of other combat veterans that are wounded that, you know, I share their story while they are in Vietnam. And this bill, I think, is like a thank you for appreciating for their service and time that they served Vietnam since the war started until the war withdrew in 1973, ending in 1975. If you ever hear a story of a Vietnam veteran serving their country and the island, being in Vietnam for one year, and I am speaking on behalf of a lot of them, and I share how I feel when I was in Vietnam, you know. When you spend month and month and month in the field, there's no Monday, there's no Sunday, and there's no Christmas. Every day is the same day. And I thank God that I returned home. But there's a lot that didn't return home. And for those that are here with the Vietnam Veterans, I committed myself to pushing to waive this veteran's fee, to make it free for the Vietnam Veterans and the other war. So I thank all of you senators for supporting this bill. And I hope that this bill will be reality before this year is out. Because I know that the senators are going to be bringing this on the regular session in July. And I know that all the senators will support this. And I know that the Governor will sign this bill. So again, thank you very much, Dankulunas Sutus Massey, on behalf of the Vietnam Veterans of America. Dankulunas Sutus Massey. Thank you.
You're very welcome, sir. And again, thank you for your service. And as well, yes, the bill that you mentioned on Senator San Agustin, that one is probably going to be on the session agenda. And that's what we're going to do with this bill and try and get this on the session agenda today and rush this through. So it's a perfect time, a perfect month for something like this to happen in July. So we will do our best to get this out. I have the Chairman on Committee on Rules, so I'm sure as a veteran, he's going to try and get this bill out too as well. We'll do everything we can, Mr. Chair, to get the information to you right away in good time. And at this time, I see that... Dan, you came up to... You want to say a few words? Okay.
Yeah, Dan Kogar. I'm a board member of the VVA, a three-time veteran. And again, thank you for this opportunity. You know, in 2024, on the 4th of July, they were having the function down at Epau. And there's probably about 27 of us, not all just from the VVA. But we were all talking about this. And the issue came up on the license plates. And not only was it 100% supported with all the comments, but what's more touching, eight of them are not here today, just within a year. And those eight would have loved to have had a veteran plate. And, you know, something my late mother taught me is when you go to defend or speak, speak from your heart, don't write it. So I got on Google and I typed in "veteran license plate policies." And then I went through each state. And I only found three that did not waive the fee for veteran license plates. And one of them was Puerto Rico, where they have part of. The other one, America Samoa. But all of the others, when you look at it nationwide, this has been accepted. And part of the reasoning for it is, you know, it's an honorable way to say thank you for all of those that sacrificed. So, you know, to keep it short and not linger on, I fully support this bill. And I'm asking the entire legislature to please to do so. It's an honorable thing to do. That's long overdue. And if we were to have this conversation, probably next year, there'll be another eight to 12 people that have passed on since then. So with that, thank you very much for this opportunity.
You're very welcome, Dan, and thank you for your service as well. It's not just the service that the veterans have provided, you know, for the right for our freedom, but the veterans organizations on Guam have done so much for our community to help other areas, you know, with bus stops, with, you know, assisting other people who are in need of homes. And it's not just the veterans they care for. They care for the entire community. So thank you so much for putting all your energy into doing that as well. And then now, I would like to recognize the Director of the Veterans Affairs. At this time, you are now recognized, Joe Sanogstein.
Madam Chair and Honorable Senators of the 38 Guam Legislature, good morning and thank you for having us here this morning. Before I proceed in reading my testimony, I would like to thank all the veterans that are present here and those that are not present for their service and also those that are on active duty. Thank you for their continuing service in the defense of our nation. This testimony is addressed to the Committee on Economic Investment, Military Build-Up, Regional Relations, Regulatory Affairs, Technology, Justice, Elections, and Retirement. Hafadi, Madam Chair and Honorable Senators. My name is Joe Sanogstein, Director of the Guam Office of Veterans Affairs. I want to take this opportunity to thank you for your continued support of our island veterans. Our veterans, young or old, pride themselves for their service and sacrifices in the defense of our nation. As a community and leaders, we explore ways to show our gratitude for their service. Today, I appear before this humble body in support of Bill Number 149-38LS, authored by Senator Therese M. Terlahi, an act to amend subsection 7160E and subsection 7161F, Chapter 7, Title 16, Guam Code annotated relative to waiving the veterans license plate fee. Bill 149-38 recognizes the end and the anniversary of the Vietnam War, Korean War, and the World War II eras. Furthermore, veterans from these eras continue to serve in our communities as role models. As it is, as they slowly depart to their final journey as they age, as a small token to our elderly veterans, the passing of this bill will serve as a true testimony and commitment of appreciation to our older generation veterans, embraced, respected, and understood by our younger generation veterans. As you could see, the veterans present here today, most of them are Vietnam veterans behind me. These folks that are behind me, and I'll say this again, were my role models. I joined the military in 1979. I retired in 2009, a 30-year Marine veteran. There were role models because every day where I live up in Dedidu, I see the airplanes take off, come in, land, take off. And I pretty much knew where they were heading. I never thought that in 2025, I'll be here testifying to support and recognize these humble veterans that have given their all and continue to give back into our community. I get goosebumps because these are very humble vets that if it wasn't for them, I wouldn't be what I am. And like Dan said, speak the truth. And this is the truth. I joined the military because of them. I did 30 years because of them. And if you all do not recognize every event that I have, that they have, I attend. Because I feel very... I feel very welcome, very safe. But more so, I want to show the appreciation of what they do, what they have done for our nation and what they continue to do here on our island. For this group of veterans, as you all mentioned, they take care of each other. They take care of the families. They take care of each veterans that they're able to do so. And that takes a lot. That takes passion. That takes love. That takes commitment. When you take your family time away so that you could tend to veterans and their families. So I'm not sugarcoating anything. I will say it again to our Vietnam veterans, our elder veterans, our Koreans, and those that are still alive from World War II. You're my role model. Thank you. And that's why I continue to press to do what I do. I continue to enjoy and push hard to do whatever I could to do justice and do good things for our veterans and their families while I'm still alive. To our Vietnam veterans that are here, thank you very much. Thank you for your service and your commitment, and I salute you all. Thank you. That's all, Madam.
Thank you so very much. Definitely like Dan said, from the heart. And that was definitely from the heart. I'd like to recognize also my colleagues who joined us, Senator Shelley Cavell. Thank you for being here. And as I mentioned earlier, recognizing our veterans. Thank you for doing that again, Director. I'd also like to recognize John Benvente, who came into the hearing this morning with us. So recognize to Mr. Benvente. Thank you. Mr. Benvente, can you please stand? We're asking everyone to be recognized. Or just wave your hand in the sky. That's him, right there, Mr. Benvente. Thank you so much, sir. And at this time, I would like to turn over the microphone to the author of the legislation, Senator Terlahi. You are now recognized.
Sidoos Massey, Madam Chair. Thank you for the beautiful testimony, and I am very moved by it. And as always, I'm always very inspired by each of you and very, very grateful. It is one of the biggest joys of being a senator is getting to work with you. And I have, I'm just, I can't say enough how grateful I am to be able to do anything that is meaningful for you. So I'm very happy. And Mr. Director, thank you for helping us. You're always leading us as well, how to honor these veterans, how to better put it into words our gratefulness. So I'm very grateful to you and to each of you who testified and really told us the realities of the situation and how we are losing veterans every year, particularly these in these categories and our really beloved, dear veterans and their spouses as well. And I know it's very, very hard because, as many of you have said, the veterans, when they came back from Vietnam and the Korean War, they came back and they took care of each other. They took care of our communities way beyond what they needed to do. They engaged, and they have done this, and they have led us all. And they, our communities are so much better because of them. They are our elder generation as well, and so I'm so very happy if we are able to pass this as soon as possible. What I really have always been touched by is the Vietnam veterans. They honor every, not even just every year, but almost on every occasion, they honor the 77 who did not make it back from Vietnam, from Guam. And I, I love that. I think every time you ring that bell, I want the whole world to hear it, that 77 men from Guam did not come back from Vietnam alive. And I think that's, we can never state that enough. But all of you who did come back and really continue to lead us in our community, again, I'm so very grateful. So this bill, it's just going to be a companion, as Mr. Commander Francisco says, that it's going to, they're going to get their license plates now with the specialized wars that they served in and other insignia. So it's going to be a good companion that if we can be able to waive those at the same time when they get those new license plates, that they are, the fees are waived for these people. And I thank you for your advocacy, Mr. Francisco, always taking care of the Vietnam veterans and all the veterans of Guam, and all of you have done the same, and I'm very, very This bill, it's tied into the existing law, so it will as well extend its benefit to the spouses, the surviving spouses of these veterans as well. So just want to make sure that everyone knows that. So thank you, Sidoos Massey.
You're very welcome, Senator Terlaih. Thank you for those touching words. And at this time, I'd like to recognize Senator Sean Gumitauta.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, everyone, for being with us this morning. And thank you again. I think we've seen each other multiple times since I've been a senator here, and I will once again say thank you once again for your service to our great country. I only have a pair of questions, Madam Chair. Recognizing that the bill as drafted requires applicants to register with the Guam Veterans Affairs Office, what information is available by the Guam Department of Revenue and Tax and the Veterans Office with respect to ongoing efforts, if any, to reconcile the Guam Veterans Affairs Office Veterans Registry with DRT's veterans records for Guam's driver's license and motor vehicle fee waivers? I know that DRT is not here, and Madam Chair, I'm hoping that we can get it at least into the committee report for that response, but with Joe here, maybe I can ask you how that's coming along.
Yes, Senator Gumitauta, thank you for that question. So what happens is when the veteran goes directly to Department of Revenue and Tax or Motor T, or Department of License Motor Vehicle. PTSD kicking in. They do bring their documents, DD 214, or whatever documents that will justify that they are veterans. What would happen normally is at the end of the month, the representative from motor vehicle will bring that document down to our office for compile or reconcile. So that's been ongoing.
If I could just add, we passed a law in the 34th Legislature to mandate that they do that to help with the registry as well.
That's correct.
No, no, I appreciate that, and I know we mandate a lot of things. It's just a matter of if it's happening, and I think I appreciate the fact that you're saying that they have been coming down.
Yes, sure, but with regards to this particular bill, because, you know, the way it's written and, you know, that the Guam Office of Veterans Affairs, again, be given the authority to review the applicants for its attentancy, to make sure that those documents are true.
Oh, no, and I appreciate the update. I could probably ask about numbers, but I think that's probably not what I'm looking for today, just at least to get some acknowledgement that there has been some type of reconciliation of that. And again, I'm hoping that the committee can get at least some input back from DRT. I only have one other question, Madam Chair. With respect, and maybe Joe, you can answer, but with respect to vehicles which are furnished by the Veterans Administration to disabled veterans, which in the case of the state of Hawaii are exempt from taxation, to what extent are such specialized vehicles made available by the VA to our disabled veterans in Guam? And are these assets exempt from taxation? Is maybe the panel or is anyone on the panel up here, are they aware of any types of vehicles that we're bringing in to Guam from the VA?
So Senator, you know, there was a bill and, you know, the Congress had introduced up in the House to allow exemptions of disabled vehicles to be charged for shipment from the U.S. I think you all probably best will have the answer with regards to the tax exempt. Based on this language here, I will say that anything that has to do with the licensing, the registration of the vehicle, because it's a disabled vehicle, which means the veteran that owns it is 100% disabled, will automatically fall under the category of the 100% exemption.
Oh, no, exactly. And I, again, I'm just kind of curious if we see, if we've seen any on our roads, but I think that's an important distinction, especially, and it's probably important for this measure as well. But that's all, that's all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you for the time, and again, thank you for being here today.
Thank you.
You're very welcome, Senator Gumitauta. And at this time, I'd like to recognize Vice Speaker Tony Aden.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and welcome to my fellow veterans to the Guam Congress Building. And I look out there and I remember serving under Sergeant Major Joe Moftness, and yet I got out, got out in the military about 33 years ago, but all of you out there look younger than I do, and I don't know how you do it. But, you know, it's just amazing how we continue to move forward with these type of legislations and, you know, in recognition of the services that our veterans have done during their time of active duty. Mr. Dan, you said it right, you know, the years go by and we see, we see, we see less and less of our veterans around who we saw last year. And it goes the same for our war survivors as well. And I was down at the Fourth of July celebration many years running now that I've been attending, and I had a conversation there, which was interesting, with one of the gentlemen, and they brought up the issue of this piece of legislation, and he goes, Senator, instead of waiving the fee, perhaps you guys should look at taking what the, what the cost would be that the government will lose and give it back to the community in the Veteran, the Vietnam Veterans Memorial, the Purple Heart Memorial, the Gold Star Family Memorial, Veteran Cemetery, these things, so that it can help them to maintain their memorials in recognition of our services to our country. And it was interesting because it was talking about veterans helping veterans, and that's our veteran fees, the money that we put out as veterans, going right back into these veteran monuments, which kind of made sense because when we look at the fees and the funding that is available currently, a lot of organizations run into that shortfall, and that's maintaining our veteran memorials. And I think this, that was actually a really good idea that they said, you know, we take those and just put it right back and give it right back out to the community. So perhaps maybe to the author, Senator Terlaih, may want to look at amending the bill or if even the folks here are amenable to that, where the funding that would have been waived goes back to the different organizations in different percentages. So what are your thoughts on that, Master Gunn, and to Uncle Nick and Sergeant Major Joe? Dan, your thoughts on that?
Vice Speaker, thank you for that input. You know, the, I'll share this, there are grants out there that does address monuments, But it is also very specific that in order to apply for that grant where that monument is to be built, has to be like inside a cemetery, for say, not outside. On the other side of it, as we move forward with our pre-application for our expansion grant down at the cemetery, within that grant, I could say will allow us to build a monument. It's just that now I want to kind of separate and focus on the need for the expansion and then go after a separate application, which is going to fall into a different category for where whatever remaining funds, after all the funding has been given out to the states and territories for expanding, what remains can be availed to us to be able to build that monument? If that makes sense.
Yeah, see, but this was just talking about the waiving of the fees, right? So to go out to the different organizations. Uncle Nick, how about your thoughts about percentage of the fees that would be waived from this, instead of being waived, that a certain percentage goes to the Vietnam Veterans Memorial in helping to maintain, or even the Purple Heart Memorial, to helping maintain those memorials?
You know, I, I've been taking care of the Purple Heart, been taking care of the Purple Heart and Gold Star Memorial and the Vietnam Veteran. We've been taking care of the memorial in Ngilao, so anything that will come, I think will be a big help better than nothing. We never got anything in the past to take care of the, we just do it when the time comes for Veterans Day, Memorial Day, we try to clean up or, you know, maintain the monuments so our visitors will always see that that place has been well taken care.
Yeah, definitely, because I think that, and that's why when I had the conversation with the individual down at Epa, that that's what they were really looking at is how is it that we can keep our memorials, you know, really in a presentation state that is proud of what we do here on our island and in recognition of those service members and those who have given their life for in defense of freedom in our nation. And I think that, you know, it just brought up a very good conversation as to how we can continue to move and get these, instead of, again, waiving the fees to move them out to the different organizations, because it's veterans' fees that will be going back to veteran organizations and veteran causes. So thank you for that, and I think that, like you said, any amount would help, right?
Senator, I'd just like to say, on behalf also of the Baragata Veterans Organization, we have a monument out there too that we keep, you know, the Baragata Veterans keep. So with every little penny that comes too, that will help, you know, rather than us volunteering and, you know, getting our funding, you know, out of our own pocket and maintaining that monument up there in the Baragata Veterans. I don't, I don't know if you've seen the monument that was built up there by the government? Yeah, that's coming from the Baragata Veterans Organization at no cost to any other than our volunteer.
So then, what I'm, what I'm hearing then is that you folks wouldn't be opposed to, instead of wavering the fees, that the fees continue, but then it goes out in percentages to the different organizations? So again, like I said, it's veterans helping veterans and going back to the organizations? Or would you guys just rather have it just, the fees just waived where, you know, we don't, the government don't collect and then it doesn't go, it doesn't go anywhere?
Can I comment on that?
Mr. Dan?
Yeah, yeah. My personal take on that is that, that my preference would be that we waive the fees. And in support of that, you have to realize that it's not just the veterans, but we have a lot of organizations that we've developed partnerships with. We have the excellent program to help, help with the Veteran Cemetery where the, they've got American Red Cross volunteers, and they've got a partnership going with all the visiting ships that when, when the different military people come in and stuff, they need community support work. So they go down and they support and help Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. San Augustine a lot in the different areas, right? Likewise, with some of the areas, it's the support we get from the organizations up at Anderson Air Force Base, and it's just starting to grow with what we're getting from, what we're getting from the Camp Bloss from the Marines. They're just getting established. So if you take all these entities and you look at the partnerships that we're having influence on establishing to support all of this. And lastly, you look at the age groups, 70 and above on most of your veterans and stuff, these are not the ones that can get out there and whack the weeds and do all the ramble stuff it takes that the younger volunteers we're getting between the military and within the community on Guam can do. So, so I think for the regular, the regular veteran that can't go out there and be the, be the grass ninja, I think they would probably benefit more and probably appreciate it because you're getting that great big thank you for what you've done. And so I think by waiving the fees and with the initiatives we have going on in the community, I think it'd be a better payback. If you took all the organizations you want to divide that up to, everyone would get 400 or 500, I don't think it's going to be significant enough to, you know, to make that difference. I think, I think the route that they're going right now would have more impact. And again, I do appreciate your idea, and thank you very much.
Oh, yeah, that was to one of the gentleman, yeah, one of the gentleman that I was speaking to down at Epa Beach. I mean, and when we look at just the small amount, 60,000, right? And that's, that's what the fiscal note came back as, 60,000. And, you know, you divide that 60,000 by $5,000 for 12 organizations, you know, that, that is a great amount that can help every organization to keep and help upkeep and maintain the different veteran memorials throughout our island. And like, again, like I said, it's veterans helping veterans, right? We're going out there and doing what we can to ensure that, you know, these landmarks are, will always be maintained for years to come and where families and veterans can always be proud of that. So, but thank you for your comments on those, on my question, and I look forward to seeing this bill move forward. Thank you, Madam Chair, for that.
Thank you, Vice Speaker. It sounds to me like another bill in the making maybe coming up, you know, for veterans, especially in that area, because one of the biggest things that the government of Guam has is we're great at building things, but we're never good at maintaining them, right? So that sounds like something that we can come up with. And, you know, actually, in my closing, I was going to bring up, just for the listening audience, that the veterans, you know, different organizations, they great, they give great fundraisers. I've been to many of them, and they should know how to party, so you can have a good time. So encourage everyone out in the public to attend these fundraisers that the veterans put out, because the money does go to a good cause for the veterans. Okay? And at this time, I'd like to recognize Senator Barnett.
Sidoos Massey, Madam Chair, and Manana Sidoos to the veterans who are here this morning. Thank you again for blessing us with your presence and your testimony in support of the bill. And I know that kind of one of the running themes in the testimony was saying thank you for your service isn't necessarily enough, and I agree, because while we say thank you for your service, we have to remember that talk is cheap and freedom isn't free. And if we don't back up these words with actions, then they really ring hollow, in my opinion. And so thank you. You know, we're hoping to give you guys an early Christmas this year with the measure that creates the veteran's license plate. And as the good chair said, we're going to try and push this through, get that committee report in so that we can have these two bills on the next session agenda and get them passed. I don't see an issue with the governor signing them into law, and so that way you guys can avail of these veterans' license plates and the waiving of the fees, hopefully in this calendar year. Because, you know, I was late this morning, we were attending the Aseena Memorial, and one thing that I find a common thread, unfortunately, tragically, is that every year we have fewer and fewer war survivors, and similarly, we have fewer and fewer veterans every year. So I want to act quickly on this measure and get it onto the floor. It has my full, full support. As far as redirecting the fees and this talk about maintaining, maintenance and the monuments, I just want to take a moment to commend the veteran community, because when you guys build a monument, when you have a monument, it is maintained. I mean, I'm talking spick and span from the Baragata Veterans Organization Memorial, which, you know, it sticks out because it's so shinar to the Purple Heart Memorial in Ngilao, so I want to commend you guys. And I think of it really as, you know, when we talk about thank you for your service, it's not just the service to country and to island, but it's also the continued service that you do out in the villages and maintaining the veterans' organizations and the monuments. And, you know, I just worry that if we're going to try and tinker with this bill, that it might slow the passage, because, you know, in my thinking, you're going to have to create a whole new fund, redirect the money, and it does really sound like another bill and another conversation that maybe we can entertain at a later date. But, you know, I'm very grateful for the focus on the veterans as the grandson of a veteran. My late grandfather was one of the original members of the Guam Combat Patrol and the Insular Guards. So anytime we see you, to see your quiet strength and to see these familiar faces, you know, every public hearing, we have a lot of veterans on Guam, but there's this core group that comes out to provide testimony, and I think it's because a lot of veterans, they don't want to come out and they don't want to be in the spotlight and, you know, so I thank you guys for, again, that service that you provide in speaking for your brothers and sisters who are veterans. So, Madam Chair, I stand in full support of the bill, and I pray for its swift and quick passage along with a companion measure that establishes the veteran license plate program. And one more time officially for the record, and I say it with meaning, thank you, Sidoos Massey, for your service. Angan magofao, magofzoo. If you're happy, Mr. Francisco, I'm happy. If you guys are mad, let us be mad with you and fight for the positive changes that you need. Sidoos Massey, Madam Chair.
You're very welcome, Senator Barnett. And this time, I'd like to recognize Senator Sabrina Salas Mantenani.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to our veterans for being here today, and I'll... And I just wanted to say that I know the previous speaker was mentioning, talking about acting with expediency with legislation dealing with our veterans, and so I just wanted to give you an update, that Bill 5, which you appeared at the last public hearing regarding the license plates, we've committed the committee report, and we're going to be pushing for it to be added to July session agenda, as well as Bill 92, which I introduced declaring in November as Veterans Awareness Month, the committee report also has been completed, and we are pushing for it to be added to the session agenda. In terms of Bill 149 that we are speaking on today, I completely support the bill. Matter of fact, if I was a senator in the last legislature, I would have supported this bill, since similar legislation was introduced in December of 2023, and a public hearing was never held on that bill. So hopefully, and I'm almost sure that I will support, and I'm sure that my colleagues will support the passage of Bill 149. I also wanted to recognize an individual in this room who is a part of my staff, and she is a veteran. So anything that you guys need, we've got Kiana Arriente, who is here. So please, make sure you say hello to her, or say hello to everybody before you leave today. Again, thank you guys for coming here to testify, and you have my full support on Bill 149. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Senator. I'm glad you brought that up, because that was part of my closing too, is that, you know, you talk about putting your mouth where your money, where your mouth is, or, you know, that saying, you know, really saying what you mean. Well, I too have hired a veteran in my office to oversee any issues that veterans may have, and I appreciate his contribution to my office as well. And if you ever need any assistance from him, it's Ralph Turlahi. He's at my office. So now I'd like to introduce you to our next senator, and that is Senator Shelley Calvo. You are now recognized, man.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you so much, and welcome. Half a day buenas. Thank you to everyone in the panel who provided their testimony, and everyone here who came in support. This bill, Bill 149, provides a meaningful recognition and financial relief for Guam's aging population. It honors the service and sacrifice of our dear veterans, and many of whom are now elderly and living in fixed income. This bill actually promotes dignity and sense of being appreciated. So for me, this is truly a mindful bill that speaks loudly of honoring and recognizing service and patriotic duties. I thank the author for this extremely mindful and appreciative bill, and I look forward to seeing this bill pass. And good luck to all of you guys. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're very welcome, Senator Calvo. And I would like to now turn it over to the author of the legislation, Senator Lahi, but just give a few comments before I do so, and in closing, again, I thank you so much for everything that you do, not just for our veterans, and each and every one of you here today who's always here during these public hearings, I greatly appreciate it, and encourage you to also, you know, bring on other veterans, the next generation of veterans, those who've served in, you know, the other wars after yours, and encourage them to continue this legacy that you have established. You know, Mr. Moffness, you've done so much for the veterans' community, and you stand a pillar of recognition. When they look at you, they think of veterans. And with each and every one of you, Nick, Francisco, a dear friend of mine who's always advocating, who gives the best fundraisers, by the way, you know, that's one of his. But we need that next generation of veterans to get involved. We need them coming to the public hearing, so I hope that the next public hearing we have for veterans, that each of you bring that next generation of veterans sitting with you to carry that torch. We don't want to be forgotten. So, other than that, thank you so much for everything. My father was a veteran, and very proud of him, and miss him so dearly. So at this time, I turn it over to the author of the legislation, Senator Turlahi, you are now recognized.
Sidoos Masi. When I was, maybe 10 years ago or more, I had the privilege of going with the class of 1968, maybe? I'm trying to remember. They went to Rota, and they had a reunion, so I went there with them, I don't know why, but I was there, and unbelievable, I had, I was privileged to hear their stories, because that was the class, they were being either drafted or volunteering, and it was really amazing to hear their laughter, their camaraderie, their jokes about, you know, but really what stuck me was their mothers' reactions to them leaving, right? And I had not really thought about that, because we just think about the veterans themselves, but then I was forced to think about their mothers' reactions to them leaving, their sisters' and brothers' reactions to them, and of course, probably their reactions to them coming back as well. So I'm just in awe of how you've been able to take that experience and turn it around and make it into such a positive lives, and really honorable lives for 50 more years, right? And today, making us all so very proud, but also very humbled, because you're very humble. And so, again, we're just inspired by all you've done. I do hope that this bill will pass, and just add to the small tokens that we are able to make to physically thank you while you are here, and immediately, if possible, because as you said, that is the reality of our situation, that we do not have the privilege of having you with us forever. And I am very grateful for something else, and that is that you all, especially those who are here, and these organizations, they've advocated. They've not just been quiet, but they've actually advocated, and we've obviously needed that, because otherwise, for example, Commander Francisco and many of you who are here already are eligible for fee waiver on the license plates, because you are a medal recipient. Many of you in the room are medal recipients, many of you are 100% disabled, so you didn't really need to push for this bill, but you did, because you want to take care of your fellow veterans, and that I really appreciate, and so that's what we're going to do by this bill. Sidoos Masi again, for all of your testimony and all of your support. Sidoos Masi, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Senator Turlahi. And as I mentioned earlier, I will do everything I can to get this bill processed, so that it'll make the session agenda to accompany the other bill, Bill 5-38. And I have a veteran who's our vice chair, and also the chair of our Committee on Rules, who also, I think, committed that we will do everything we can to get this bill out in time for the July session. I just want to get his attention, so he knows that, that's good, right? Right, Senator? With your help, I will get all the information he needs right away, so we can get that out and celebrate July, what it's truly celebrating for, and that's our veterans, so we can get that out in our session. So if there are no further questions or comments, this concludes our discussion on Bill 148-38, I mean, I'm sorry, it's 149-38 LS. And I want to thank everyone who came to testify and participate. Create a great day. And now the time is 10:22 a.m., and this public hearing is adjourned. Sidoos Masi. Biba, veterans. Vina.